So they're they're three good kids.
They know how to play it?
Yeah.
They're not like my four year old?
No, and they're just like telling them, oh, they go pitch.
As far as eating, they come home, right? You just burn it off.
Yeah. They have the parents hold the pads for football. Oh, I was like, I don't know.
Well, the tract, you know, I was in the tract, and then their cargo base, they use cargo for them.
Yeah.
You know, so.
We could do that in our own.
They could do that in your.
Alright, well, number two, I'm sure you'll just swing in, so let's see, Sarah.
Today is Laura's show.
Alright, Laura.
My show. Um, so the only thing on the agenda tonight is the retaining wall discussion, and it's a continued discussion. We kind of introduced it a lot of months ago. Um, so in front of you tonight and what I'll present is kind of a continuing discussion out of those retaining walls specifically in the lake shore setback. So, um, what I have on the screen, uh, and I think I printed off, not necessarily attached to your packet, but there's a second document. And that's the presentation, uh, for tonight. But, um, the definition in our city code of retaining walls, which is a wall or similar structure designed or constructed to hold back, prevent lateral movement of the earth. Um, currently retaining walls, um, are not allowed in the shore setback zone. Um, they are only permitted as an in-kind replacement, uh, specifically that's the exact height, depth, length, exact movements with no, uh, new approachments. Um, if a new approachment is proposed or a new wall is proposed, the only way to process that is through a variance process, which is what you as council see, um, fairly regularly, uh, of council meeting. So, um, the current challenges with this code is, um, there's no guidance within our code with recommendations of what we want to see for methods of construction, materials, performance standards, or any of that, because it's just a blanket prohibition of the retaining walls. Um, if someone wants to change the material, that may result in a new expansion, like new tiebacks, new anchors, changing a material from a timber wall to an older wall is considered or can be considered an expansion against the defined in-kind definition we have in our code. Um, and then the current code offers no ability to permit supporting boulder walls for low walls for, um, late access stairs. So, um, the image I have on the side here of the presentation, we do allow lake stairs or stairs to the lake. Um, they can be constructed in a very, very different ways, but, um, retaining walls, because they're prohibited, if someone wants to put these inset stairs in and they need some retaining walls to hold back that earth, they're coming through with a variance process in front of you, and you've seen those before.
You can put up wood stairs over the top.
Well, the stairs are, we can do administratively because we allow lake access, or stairs to the lake.
Or stone steps if you want to hold back.
If there's really no. Yes, if there's no greater than.
If that means stairs, then that's possible.
Right, right. Just kind of setting them on top of the.
Like a rain.
Yeah.
Lot of, lot of the challenge you have with the stairs, the inset stairs is even, you know, if you're doing any kind of switchback to get a level surface even across a, a three foot wide walkway, you need to retain a foot or two, you may need to retain a foot or two of soil, depending on what the, the initial slope is.
The rocks on the right hand side there, you can kind of clearly see are holding back soil from falling onto the stairs, right? So those would be considered retaining walls, um, accessory to the lake stair, but there's still new retaining walls that maybe weren't there before. Um, and then, um, our current code does not permit a comprehensive response to, uh, catastrophes, slope failure. So you guys have seen, um, and we've done a good job of addressing emergency slope repair recently in our code, but it still requires an after the fact variance, uh, process if you permit an emergency slope repair. And the emergency slope repair is intended to be temporary, but what happens when that temporary events turns into the permanent solution? And they're sort of going through that after the fact variance with really the council's hand relative, not tied, but limited in their review, um, as seeing that variance kind of after something's already installed. Um, and then last, uh, variances have, uh, require, variances required for every wall and property owner must, um, provide that practical difficulty standard. And practical difficulty is that high standard of provided to us state statute regulatory for uniform against any type of variance. Um, it's not necessarily specific to retaining walls or different performance standards that we want to see in our city. So, uh, lastly, what we talk about is staff oftentimes is looking at these different plans and then what's a boulder wall, an outcropping boulder, a landscape edging, and those different types of things as well for point of performance standards and basic definition requirements, um, which I included kind of some varied pictures there. So, uh, what we're recommending is to replace the current system, uh, amend the code and, uh, to define two options for permitting retaining walls, um, in the lake yard. Uh, so either a staff accessory, a, a staff permit for administrative zoning permit with very specific conditions. And then basically anything that doesn't match those conditions would be a conditional use permit with outlined conditions set by the council of what you want to see, what best practices are. And, um, so basically those standards that the applicants can see, they can recognize, and they can meet and design their walls around those standards, um, instead of just designing what they want and then trying to match those practical difficulty requirements to it. So, um, just kind of a, a place to start talking from, what we're proposing with the administrative permit, which would be a staff issued zoning permit, would be allowing for replacement walls and the, they would have to be four, um, under four feet height. And they would have to document a failure of an existing wall. And the proposed replacement must be in the general same location as the existing wall. Maybe there's a new approachment because they're changing material or requiring new tiebacks, but not necessarily creating all new wall footprint places throughout the lake yard. But a general replacement, um, under these kind of smaller walls. And then any new walls being proposed would have to be an integral part of a permitted accessory use or a, a accessory improvement, like those lake stairs. Is kind of what staff is thinking as an administrative permit, uh, conditions. And then, um, some recommended conditional use permit conditions, um, again, conditional use permit requires a public hearing, requires, uh, planning commission recommendation and council action to be approved, but we outline those conditions and those standards of what will, uh, the residents to meet. So we're recommending, um, that the proposal would demonstrate or, um, would be fixing a demonstrable failure or an erosion control problem. Um, if the replacement wall was four feet height or larger, uh, it would come to you. Any walls proposed within a bluff, um, would come to you, so even if it was a small wall or a replacement wall, if it was in a bluff zone, it would still trigger that CUP because it's such a sensitive area. And then, um, new walls, uh, proposed that are not part of like a lake stair or a permitted accessory structure would also come to you. Um, and then you have the ability of additional conditions, um, which maybe you see are specific for this site or we can talk about more uniform conditions that you always want to see, um, for every conditional use permit and, and making that a part of the text amendment or proposed text amendment. Um, requirements for all permits, um, for all retaining wall permits would be a site plan and elevation plans. They would need to include their method and their materials necessary for construction, erosion control plan, um, staff recommending a landscape plan as well, depicting, um, vegetative screening to cover at least eighty percent of the walls from a lake view. That came from, um, a called out code that the DNR identified as something that's working good in other cities. So we are talking that, or we are recommending that as a way of a qual- qualitative measurement that we can compare on a plan. But that eighty percent or those standards of a landscape, uh, plan is up for discussion by the law.
And as you achieve that, hopefully it matures, or, you know, within a lot of time period or?
I think, um, it's something, the conditions are what you guys would want to discuss about when they're matured or as, you know, if they're proposing a wall that is supposed to grow to maturity of four feet height, does that count? Or does it need to be that height at time of planting? That's a clarification we can make as part of these conditions. And then, um, the last requirement for permit would be anything over four feet does require engineering per state building code. So tonight we're asking, um, for you to provide some guidance on the proposed recommendations, whether, um, the route, the recommendation of an administrative and conditional use permit seems reasonable, uh, to review those proposed requirements for each type of permit and then direct staff to propose ordinance language based on your recommendation. So we're looking kind of for overall feedback, guidance of what you guys see or want to do with retaining walls in the lake yard.
No, it's had that, you know, with Matt, it's, um, the landscape plan, there was always a catch twenty two is put it in, you put it in and then dies. We have people up until that point, we wanted, you know, we had, we had the problem with, uh, for our house, they had put a bunch of trees, and beavers came down and they chewed the trees out. And they said, well, do a production, you can't do more trees than beavers out of now. You know, so it's kind of a catch twenty, so you could just run in for hours essentially.
We could put something in the code, or in language, saying that needs to be maintained in perpetuity, right?
Well, I mean, that's the catch, you know, essentially.
Well, there's also, I mean, by, by, there's also types of vegetation that are subtracting, there's a whole host of information, which for almost any tree, there's only one option. You're talking about vertical surfaces, lots of that, different types of things that can be grown in there that maybe take a year or two to mature, but when they're lately, you know, they certainly just cost them a year, because there's just a lot of different.
Yeah, it's just a catch twenty, because I had a building, just as an example of this problem, in Golden Valley where thirty years ago, the neighbors, well, all these bushes in the backyard, the moon and the downhills were back there, so they had all these nice arborites. Well, in thirty years, all these trees grew, and so all the arborites never had any sun, so they all died. Everything they put in after the fact died. I couldn't get anything to live, you know, so it's one of those, they say, well, you're not, it's like, well, I can't do it, if you have. So it's a screaming green, dead bushes. It's got, it's got green bushes. And it all, so, but I don't want to keep going back to something, that's the catch twenty two. Kind of like pavers, you know, you say you gotta have pavers that are waterproof or whatever happens, even over ten years, they collect sand and then they don't put anymore, or a little pond you gotta put in, they're not dredged, and they fill up, they don't, they don't act, they're just supposed to be.
For some developmental projects, um, we have an expectation that the vegetation be, um, established and then is there for a minimum amount of time. And so, I mean, that's, that's a little easier than in perpetuity, but I think if we're, if it's a conditional use permit, it, it does leave it open for us to come back to and make sure they're meeting their conditions, so that's kind of.
I know what you're getting at, so why, I just wanted, just because things change, we should have some kind of, well, something that details something, I'd give.
Yeah, I, you know, another sample is like the Euro Bowl Club was supposed to put in a screenage in between their residential and commercial. And then to appease us, they had these, uh, I don't know, twelve seven meter high.
I was gonna say those five inches.
And then they just drive over them, right? And the city isn't driving around doing that, and I, I think that's a unreasonable burden of the city to drive around. So then what is a bee means neighbor comes, right? And then start paying neighbors against neighbors. So one of the ways, and I think part of it is what's the vision we have in our head and what these walls look like? Because there has been being screenage on stuff that's athlete, you know, holding back, they've been talking about, you know, screenage, yeah, right?
Oh, like now, quite a ripper on this stuff.
So I think in our minds, we might be thinking about this huge bluff, mainly this last one, and provoke this conversation. The height of the walls is a big thing about how much they stick out, you know, so we're talking about, hey, the, the four foot high walls in itself is a limit to aesthetically how they go. But I'm not a big, uh, supporter of a burden being on the city to make sure people's maintain compliant. I'd rather find a way to incorporate in our design function upon minimize the exposure. And there's a huge chunk of people here that are just gonna make it look nice because they have to look at it too, you know, and so, um, finding, finding maybe some relationship in our design side and, and most of these retaining walls, we're talking zero to seventy five, yeah, I remember this. Um, you know, for most people, other than the bluff situation, which is another set of circumstances. You know, it's not, those walls aren't that big, there isn't that many of them, and it's, uh, uh, we can rely on the people themselves to pubify the landscape on our own, about how, 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 and these.
We haven't really seen, you know, when, just the walls we have currently, we haven't really seen people going backwards with their vegetation that they've put in. I mean, I've, I've been around and I've seen how they, like I said, they, it's their property, they want to make it look nice. It's very rare that it would just be, oh, but the city's done that, we're gonna go down these.
Yeah, I, I.
Which is that like spending.
I think, I think a lot of this, you, you, you get to the original with the design standards that you're not, we're, we're not interested in allowing monolith, uh, you know, huge vertical walls that, um, you know, look like the side of a building, um, in the lake shore. And so requiring some kind of design standard, you know, this is one example, you know, eighty percent coverage.
Does it also cover seawalls or not seawalls?
No, seawalls are managed currently as a conditional use permit right now, and they don't have a landscaping plan attached to them. They're not really regulated through our retaining wall system, they're regulated more through our floodplain management.
And I'd say not hard to screen the.
The seawall, um, metal.
I mean, from the ancient, yeah.
From the, yeah, yeah, that's kind of a different.
But if you ask me, eighty percent or sixty percent, that's not really good enough, is, there's always going to be argument, I'm just getting seated, but anyway, you're looking for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's always really those hurdles, so, um, and there's always, obviously, the walls can be straight out there, as they zigzag, or you can't put plants in the middle of stairways that are zigzagging.
Yes, yeah.
So it's usually, you can't.
And you'll see them and have the opportunity to say, you know, your landscape plan was good except for the spot.
And that's what I think in the beginning, if you establish it in the beginning, that's probably good enough.
Yeah, and it's gonna hold, it, it's helpful for staff, especially if you, we move towards an administrative permit, because we can say, you've submitted a landscape plan, it shows that out of your ten foot wall, eight feet of it are going to be covered with grasses and plantings and stuff, so we can kind of hit that eighty percent mark. Any wall that's over four feet, any wall that's in a bluff or anything, that's all going to come to you to review that specific site as a conditional use permit.
No, that's not just necessarily, it's possible, you, you give it a back to sure.
Well, where did you find the information, where did?
So, uh, we reached, or we were talking about some shoreline management stuff, and they provided just best kind of practices that they've been seeing kind of around the state. I think that's a significant one came from.
Well, they had, they had a training for bluffs and other higher standards in the shoreline, and they, they highlighted some different communities where they went above the DNR's, um, minimum requirements, and they, they gave us examples in that, um, center of what they thought was really beneficial. Where are the higher standards, could they talk about?
They have, we have a list of.
Okay, I, I am interested in kinds, idea of initiative, and I do appreciate this type of research coming into Lake Shore areas, because there's so many options you can do with vegetation.
Yeah.
I, I am in support of this, I think it makes sense to have some level of, you know, true, these things of understanding, and I'm assuming they have the exact same conditions, but they generally take the issue.
Yeah, and on the administrative side, you know, I, I definitely support that hundred percent, right? I am, uh, you know, I'm changing, changing from wood to stone and, I mean, I'm in favor of allowing that, especially as we see that, you know, and maybe it's only a one directional thing. Maybe, maybe we're most interested in, you know, supporting more stone retaining walls because they're less invasive. Maybe if somebody has, uh, timber wall, they want to go to stone, they can, but can't necessarily go from stone backwards to timber wall because of the finding of tiebacks and tiebacks and all that is more invasive.
So it's also a different aesthetic too, if that's what you're looking for, yeah.
So that would be another way to look at it, but I think go with the residents, simplify this process, because takes the long, then problems do come, then comes an emergency, you know, and then it just escalates.
I thi- I think a good example of, you know, one to, to talk about is the lake stairs. We, I won't say a lot, but we get quite a number of lake stair applications and it's, and none of us want to go tell the resident, well, that makes complete sense, see it all over the place, no issues, but you're gonna have to go get a variance, take all that expense and all that energy or time. Um, and I don't think, if I'm not even correct, if I'm wrong, but I don't think you guys have ever said no. To, to, to someone who wanted, wanted to just put a stair wall, so we just sent them through this whole process.
And then. Can I add a stairwell or a block with this?
Yeah, block, well, please.
And that is much administrative district, that too, within reason.
Because if there, so if you go zero to seventy five, you, you don't have a stair, you want to go one in, that's DNR, Watershed and our approval or?
It's, it's a permit, it's a permit through us, and then, um, I'll, we, we would make you go get in touch with Watershed to make sure it doesn't trigger any of theirs, depending on like if you're doing some floodplain or something, but mostly it's a zoning permit through us. Um, unless specifically if you're looking to construct those like depth posted beam stairs, uh, when you do these stone stairs, that's where it starts getting pretty intricate of where are your retaining walls, where are your top and bottom walls? Because if you're proposing anything more than like a landscape edging, it, it's prohibited within our code. So it's a lot of working with the designers to try and either get around a variance or just setting them through the process and then working with them diligently to try and create those practical difficulty standards, which is such that high threshold.
So administratively, would we be proposing to allow a certain height of holdback if you do stone?
If they're not in a slope, if they're not a bluff, I'm sorry, um, but if they want lake stairs.
That's a big slope for the.
Yeah, right, right. If they're not a bluff, but if they just, um, want lake stairs like this and they need some retaining walls to be an integral part to facilitate the creation of those stairs, we're proposing that to be administrative.
I think that's great.
How many of us do you see?
Hold on.
I have, hold on, I have a lot, like, me, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if they have a wooden stair and they're even just replacing that wooden stair and they want to move it if they've got a problem or, yeah, I mean, we do.
We would.
And to answer your question, the DNR, we're, we've adopted their shoreline regulations, so technically, yes, the DNR is, who's approving is what we're doing. And we're, our code needs to fit into what they want.
Right, and so then the DNR says, you, okay, you're fine out with ours, so they don't have to come back.
Yeah, they'll actually have to approve any changes we make to this.
Yeah, because we're altering our.
At the code level.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we want to text amendment, uh, forward, this would alter our shoreline code because that's where this lives. And so we would have to notify and bring the DNR into the conversation with what we're proposing to change, because we are the government body reviewing and issuing permits underneath their shoreline regulations.
But I think your question, your question is i- in the scenario where we, as these lake stairs, we make that administrative approval, or you're, I think you're asking that, does that also, do, are we telling the applicant, you gotta get a permit from the DNR as well?
No.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah, he is the city when it issues a permit. As long as the code changed in the DNR, uh, within the shoreline, um, of our city code.
So that requires, you have some of those on site to assess this, does that, or do, do you have any go on there?
Uh, no, they would have to, so, submit all of those permitting requirements, which would then give us our grading information, any existing and proposed grade, any, um, the top and bottom wall, any cross sections and all, anything like that. Sometimes the larger complex types walls, especially if it's in a bluff or something, we might go on site and inspect that or at least, um, ask for like existing condition, uh, pictures and stuff like that, but stuff we're talking about that would fall under administrative, hopefully would all be relatively small enough that it wouldn't, it wouldn't probably come to that.
And it would get inspected after it's installed.
A final inspection will be required as part of the permitting process to make sure it got, the project got completed, vegetation was planted and stacked.
Then require a survey.
Oh, you can file an inspection or the, the plan?
The company? No, it doesn't require a survey, but we do need, um, if you're doing retaining wall work, we do need grading information, top and bottom of wall, existing grades, proposed grades. So it often might be easiest for the applicant to have a survey, or if we have a whole survey on file, we might provide that to them to work off of that, but we wouldn't require a new survey to do a retaining wall work. If that's something that's important information, we, it could be a condition if that's something you want to entertain of the requirement of either administrative permit or conditional requirement.
But I mean, we, we are asking in, in here that that be part of the permit process. What we probably still aren't doing, wouldn't require for this was, is to have an as-built, uh, for a survey.
Right.
If you built in, in since, instances like this, if you built what you said you were going to, going to, and we go out with your plan, um, send the inspector out, we can easily ascertain whether you did it. We, we require as-built surveys on, you know, new houses when the entire lot is being, you know, redelivered.
New houses.
Right.
Some of them are really large additions.
And we have a rate from the surveys, so many useful, because we, people were doing the five hundred dollar debts, and we required.
Yeah, yeah, you want to fight it or another people.
People that's, did their tax on DNR.
A lot of times they can pull an existing survey, their hands feeder will overlay it into their plan and, and give us a pretty comprehensive grading plan or site plan that.
Yeah, especially that.
But if they have an existing, they, would they have to be shown on a survey or?
If, if it's a.
They need a site plan, they, they'll need a site plan. So if they have an existing survey and they want to alter it themselves or their contractor wants to alter it, we'll accept that. We won't make a survey or go certify and sign the new changes.
But we do need a plan that shows what they're doing and how that ties into the grades.
Can I make a statement off this? Office in here?
Um, I don't.
Do you make, does it wash out for, for, or some problems on there, or do you feel like this is pretty?
No, you know, as staff, we talked, we talked a lot, kind of what do we see in our variances and what are we, what are common variances that we see get approval? And where do we talk to residents about kind of the commercial process? So we tried to really make the administrative permit a small scope relative to the specific kind of variance requests we see all the time, hoping to kind of capture those and make them a smoother process. With, and then anything on a larger scale, we as staff would want to bring back to you anyways, and conditional use permits seem to fit those needs the best.
That concerns, that's not, because the status, I was more concerned of, do we want to give a sample? How much more room are we wanting to get them to get these things done? It's really more concern at our heart than it is their heart. And I think we've been trying to go as much as possible to give the staff as much flexibility to get things done within reason, so we don't have to come through this whole process.
Yeah, it's a bit of a.
Are there any other conditions or things you guys would want to see either as a requirement from an administrative permit that we ask to be submitted to us by the applicant? Or expectations that you, that you're used to seeing, um, your variances that you'd want to see submitted for a conditional use permit? Any, any other kind of conditions or anything that you guys need?
I mean, you have to just think about it, is this what I was listening to, or maybe so I'll just pass on that today.
Yeah.
Pretty useful right now, because at the end, it's a piece of draft language, which is exactly what it says, but I think we're a winner in action for sure. You know, there's always, you know, nuances of, you know, does it say this or does it say that?
Shout, or may, or, yeah.
We're always going to run through the app, but I think ninety-five percent of people actually try to solve this for us, so.
Right. So right now I'm asking direction to staff on, to draft that proposed ordinance language and, and start the process of amended, a text amendment to go through a public hearing and planning commission and everything. Um, and so I'm asking for direction from council, if you think that's the appropriate next step.
I think we need to do that, because we'll see the line of relation, so we'll, plenty of time to see as the single stewardess, and, and decide the fine portion and everything, so.
Yep.
Whether it's plenty of evidence, so I think it's in the right, in the right direction, so.
Anything you think, and, and I, because it's still a little bit new, um, if you have any thoughts, have you think about it more? If you reach out to Laura or I, say, oh, could you, could you cover this and, while we're, while they're drafting this, so we, we can address those.
Yeah. Yeah, if you think of new things or if you're seeing examples out there and you have questions, definitely give me a call. We'll work on drafting some stuff, but it will need to, like we talked about, it will need to, we're amending the shoreline, so we have to give DNR a sixty day notice, I believe, before we can have a public hearing. So we'll spend some time drafting language, and then there's an extra long, uh, public hearing process with the DNR before we can even publish it to go to planning.
Which the good news is, from that standpoint, the DNR, once we push it through, and they, they, assuming they approve, they already approved all that stuff, so if they were doing, as well, we don't need any more approvals from the DNR at that point, because the severity of the approval, and their part based on the changes would be to our, to our shoreline history.
Right.
Alright?
Okay, any other questions? Easy enough?
Good for you.
Yes, Jane, oh, no, you're up, you're up next, Jane.
I know.
Your friend.
I'm just a P.
Yeah. We, we put the gimp on the end.
I'm hoping to get a lot of sympathy here, I was, I was told to act like I'm really in pain, see how that works.
To say at the end of it, uh, was this everyone?
Yeah.